The mics are on. It is four o'clock. Let's begin. I will call to order the Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025 City of Battle Creek Planning Commission meeting. Can we get a roll call for attendance, please?
Commissioner Hughes?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Godfrey?
Here.
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Commissioner Dennison?
Here.
Commissioner Moten?
Commissioner White?
Here.
And Mayor Binkie?
Here.
Thank you for that. Onto approval of the minutes, this being the February 26th, 2025 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the minutes be accepted as presented.
A second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Move in support, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minute?
Can I just point out the minutes on the agenda, say the 23rd, and then the minutes on the actual minutes, say the 26th? So just noting the correct date?
On the agenda.
Yeah. On the agenda, it says minutes for February 23rd, and it's, it is the 26th, right?
Correct.
Is the correct date?
It was, yes, it was. And it later in the, the minutes provided, it's stated it's the 26th. It's just on the agenda itself that it's marked the 23rd.
Yes, for the record.
Yep. Thank you for that. All right. Good afternoon.
That's my tire.
Not a problem.
Got new guy here.
All right, next on the agenda, any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Any additions or deletions?
No additions, no deletions.
All right, we'll now proceed to the public hearing. As a reminder, all with public hearings, we'll hear from the staff, then hear from the applicant, which today it won't be, but we'll open the floor for public comment. We'll ask that when coming forward, you state your name and address. Once comments are completed, we'll close the public hearing. All right, with that, we'll open for consideration of the Lakeview District Subplan of the Master Plan. Staff report, please.
Yeah, thank you. This plan has been in the works since October of 2023. Through this process, there was a robust outreach for public. There was a lot of public participation. There was just recently, from the last meeting, that the Planning Commission had an opportunity to look at this plan. There was a notice sent out to all of the neighboring communities, all the utility railroad, giving them 42 days to provide any comments on the plan. We did not receive any comments from the public or from these neighboring jurisdictions or from the utility companies. Today will be the final public outreach for this particular process before the Planning Commission will be asked to take action on the plan. This subplan will become part of the overall master plan. We will be, as the Planning Commission as a team and the steering committee that's been placed together, will continue working on the update to the master plan through the housing component, and this will be summarized in that document.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Does the Commission have any technical or clarifying questions for staff? I have one. Regarding the public comment through the public engagement processes, is that, is that published anywhere for people to go see and reference? Is there like anything included in the report on that?
All of the comments have been incorporated into the document. We do have a list of the actual comments, and I'm not sure, to be honest with you, I will check to see if they've been added to the website. If not, I will add them.
Okay, thank you for that. All right.
Yeah, I have a couple, I have a couple comments. So-
Are they technical or clarifying? We'll get to deliberation.
You're right.
We can wait. Thank you. Thank you. You're fine. Okay. Since there are no more technical or clarifying questions, we'll open it for public comment on the proposed Lakeview District Subplan of the Master Plan. It appears we have one.
We have one, all right. I'm Annie Stutler, 69 East Langley. So this is kind of my hood. I've looked things over. I'm all in favor of what you guys are thinking about. So you have my blessings on most of it, not quite all of it, but most of it. These are very sparky comments coming out of my brain today as I was observing my town, which I do live and breathe in Battle Creek. It has given me everything it's got. I've got, I support, I can't say enough about this town. But when I tell people where I live, we've got this redheaded sister, stepsister attitude about ourselves, and I don't know how you're going to change that culture, but that's got to change. That's sparky comments. Drove down Jackson Street today, looked at the homes that, it was at Neighborhoods that built, right there in Jackson?
Habitat.
Habitat, okay. The outside, just sparky comments. The outsides looked really clean, the insides did not look great. People do not understand homeownership. Horaqs, sparky comments, you guys, leave them alone. They're great. They're a diamond in our city. They're a destination. We are so lucky to have them as a friend, and just let them have their space, and I'm all about Horaqs, leave them alone. Another spark comment, 20th Street. I drove from 20th Street to Capitol today, just on the north side of that two-mile stretch that counted 11 vacant properties, as far as commercial and places that could go. Now, I was going 45 miles an hour, so, but it was close. We need jobs in this town. We need corporate jobs, we need salary jobs. I've lost my dentist, I now have to go to Jackson, and you know, none of us can get any colon care in this town anymore. Boom. I have three units built in Huntington Hills. One is finished, two are not. They can be finished to your choice. I've had nobody look. They're listed. They've been listed for four months. We used to build, my company used to build 26 houses a year, and now we're down to about three. The other thing I've got to say is Huntington Hills is for sale. I've got about 40 acres, and it's a fire sale. So if anybody's interested in developing that area also. I don't know how to do this, you guys. I'm concerned. I think what you've got is great. I don't know where the money's going to come from. I don't know where the people are going to come from. I'd love to see it happen. I'm just, yeah, I mean, if you ask me to go out and develop it, I'm not going to go throw my money at it type of thing. So you're going to have to find the monies and the people, and you're going to have to teach them how to keep their houses up to standards, because people do not understand how to care for a home. It's amazing. I'm building a home on Gogwak Lake, and the guy just hasn't have a clue, so I don't know how I could maintain it. But point being, a lot of concerns. I am in the housing, it's all my world, so. Okay, that's it. Done.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else, are there any questions from commissioners for the public comment?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'd be curious to hear what you'd like the Planning Commission to do differently, because some of what you shared is, I would say, a bigger city set of issues, and-
It is.
And so I'd be really curious to hear, like, what role do you think we might be able to play to access your, or, you know, respond to your concerns?
And they are, it is, it was sparky, I told you that. It's just out of my head today. After looking at the stuff and driving down the streets, I'm just making notes like crazy. I just want to make sure that this new, if you're going to do this new project on this area, that you're getting people that can, how are you going to get people to afford it? Building costs, my God, you guys. I put a house up in Lathrop, 1,174 square feet, and it was $312,000.
That's 89 Lathrop.
Thank you. And that house is a gem. If you haven't driven down Lathrop, that brightens that whole neighborhood. It's so cool. But what did that, what did that up to? 325 or something a square foot? It was just, building costs are out of control, and I don't know how you're going to get people in to do this, and how you're going to get people to spend the money. Are you guys going to afford it? Are you going to bring? So point being, I'm all for this concept, or at least most of it. I just don't know where it's all going to come from, and then the people that live there, are they, because I'm, I remember I'm a home builder. I know how to take care of my home. I've been pulling weeds. I got 14 bags of curb today, but people don't do that. So how are we going to make that happen, so that it's beautiful? That's, so I don't have any answer for you. I just happened to look at the stuff, thought it was very, very cool. I'm going to support most of it, but then I'm driving around the town, looking at all these little things that we've done, and thinking, mm, didn't go well, did it? So that's not very nice to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, of course, Mayor.
I just want to make one comment. Redwood Neighborhood Apartment Complex out on La Crosse, then, for Oslo Road. Ted has probably worked very hard. They're looking to build one other apartment complex in our community. He's given them three locations out there in this area, and they haven't bought into it yet. It's tough. I mean, we've got to be in the right place at the right time in order to succeed. And driving through that Redwood neighborhood, it's beautiful. I mean, everyone wants to live there, and they're paying big bucks. I think the least amount of rent is 1,800, and it goes all the way up to 2,400. But people like to park in a attached garage. They don't want a basement, so they don't, no one's going to have to climb the stairs.
Yep.
We hope that we can get that other development. I know that they're looking at township right now, so.
Huntington Hills is for sale.
This will help this development, this plan, if we can get that.
Oh, absolutely. I'm all over what you guys are doing. I think it's great. I just am very concerned. That's all.
We'd like to get the development. We really would.
Oh, amen. Amen. Yeah, thank you.
All right. I appreciate everyone's comments. Seeing that there are no more, I will close the public hearing.
Yeah, I have, oh, yeah, I have a whole bunch.
When we get to the item, we'll have discussion.
They keep telling me to go, yeah.
It's, it's just on the agenda, a little different today. We'll hear your comments, believe me. I'll-
Thoughts?
Okay, thank you, Annie, for everything. All right, any old business?
No old business.
Okay, so on to new business. Here we go. So now, formal recommendation to adopt Lakeview District Subplan as part of our master plan. Are there any additional staff comments before we get to commissioners?
There are none.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioners, any, any discussion, any comments, questions? Commissioner Dennison?
Is it my turn?
It's your turn.
Thank you. Yeah. So I've got a couple questions. First of all, after, you know, really digging into this, can I get a better understanding of what TIF funding is, and who pays that?
Marcel, would you like to answer that question, or I can give a short answer?
I would not like to answer. I would prefer to tell Derek.
Yeah, I probably can help with that. Thank you for the question. And the, the, the plan area here, as laid out, is a part of essentially the boundaries of what we call the LDDA, the Lakeview Downtown Development Authority, which, as you referenced, is a TIF district in the city of Battle Creek. And TIF stands for Tax Incremental Financing, and Tax Incremental Financing districts are typically used to develop underdeveloped areas. We have three of them here in the city of Battle Creek. One is this LDDA area, one is around the Fort Custer Industrial Park, and one is in our downtown area. And TIF districts normally form when there's a relatively small amount of development. You establish a tax base based on the development that's there at the time, and then any incremental tax that's collected as a result of growth over time is captured by the district and reinvested back in the district. And if you want to see an example of an extremely successful TIF district, it would be the Battle Creek Tifa, which is what surrounds the industrial park. So as you can imagine, before any of those 90 businesses that are there now existed, there was a relatively small tax base there, and a TIF district was formed, the base was set, and then as businesses developed there and incremental tax revenue was created, it was captured by the district and reinvested in the district for future growth. And that would be the same thing happening in the LDDA. Currently, the LDDA is a TIF district that captures on an annual basis, but it doesn't use its capture for projects. It redistributes all that capture back to the various taxing jurisdictions. What would happen going forward with this plan is the LDDA would start to retain some of its capture and then use that capture to help implement this plan.
Okay. Okay. Then just some other, just from reading this, some other things that came up for me is the cost, as Annie suggested, the cost of building, and it's not just building, it's fixing the infrastructure all around it. Where are we going to get funding for that? And then what, what about the timeframe for this? I mean, if you want to, I'm just going to just throw all this out. Timeframe, timeframe for this, are we going to go into this, obviously, in phases? But what are we thinking of the timeframe for this?
I could probably help with those questions as well. Let me speak to the timeframe first. So we don't really have a set designated timeframe for this implementation. At this point in the process, this is obviously a planning document. It's a vision for what it could be. You know, we'd like to be aggressive about implementation, but the realistic, you know, the reality of this probably is that, I mean, it's, it's going to take years, right, to build out this type of, of a vision for the Beckley Road corridor. That being said, you know, there are three primary development, I'm going to say, objectives as a part of this plan, three areas where they focused, they're thinking about how we could reimagine the corridor. You know, I think if you look at, for example, the greening of the north or the south end of Lakeview Square Mall, right? That's a public works project that could be implemented, in theory, over the next few years. And that's where, you know, LDDA funding could be supportive and could help make that happen. You know, the city as an entity, or the TIF district as an entity, has some control over moving that timeline. And so I think that's the kind of thing that could be developed over the next few years. Harder to say about some of the residential development, or particularly the property, you know, the, the development that's geared towards privately held property. You know, we're going to have to motivate developers to make something happen, and, and if I could, if you could indulge me for just a second, I'll circle back to what the mayor was saying a moment ago. You know, the Redwood development, which, you know, is a clear indication that this type of housing can develop in this area. They've been looking for a second spot, and we have shown them this vision of the Target Plaza area as a mixed-use residential area. And I, you know, right now, unfortunately, that spot isn't quite big enough for them. They're looking for something larger. But just having this vision and being able to show it to developers for what could be, rather than the sea of parking lot that is there right now, I think will spur development. I just don't know that we're in a position yet at this time to put a solid timeframe around that. And I, I think I missed an earlier part of your question, before the time, did I miss something, before the timeline part of it?
I was just, I, I, my notes here just say I was talking about the cost of building.
Yeah, and, and the cost.
And the infrastructure, where we're going to come up with funding for that.
And, you know, and the LDDA can, can fund the public infrastructure pieces. A TIF district like that isn't typically designed to fund private sector development, but it can, it can certainly fund the public infrastructure pieces of this. And another example would be Whitmark Drive, which is currently a private drive, and it's the drive that you enter when you drive along the Target Plaza there. In this plan, it's envisioned as being taken over as a public road, rerouted to provide for housing a little bit closer to the river, to Brickyard Creek back in that area. And that's the kind of project that could be funded with the TIF dollars as part of this development. And so for most of the public infrastructure, I believe the funding will likely come from tax incremental financing revenue, and the rest of it, you know, would likely be a variety of sources, including, you know, there, there could be certainly, if you think about re-greening and exposing Brickyard Creek back to its original path, I mean, there could certainly be state resources that would support that. Could be even federal resources potentially that could support that type of a development. So private sector dollars, grants at the state and federal level, a level, and then TIF funding. Probably a combination of all of those sources.
Yeah.
Wouldn't each one of these issues come back to the Planning Commission before it was undertaken?
Well, there's a couple of things that need to happen with this plan, too. First of all, we have to rethink zoning out in that area. And so, you know, primarily, the, the areas along Beckley Road are one of our B districts, one of our commercially oriented districts that don't necessarily currently allow for the type of mixed-use housing that's envisioned here. So one of the first steps for implementation is to, to do some zoning work out there. That certainly would come before the Planning Commission. And then in the future, whatever development that occurred, that occurred by right, obviously would simply go forward. Anything that required a variance or any other type of regulatory approval from the Planning Commission, obviously would be before this body.
Yeah. And then, like, you were just talking about the green space and Brickyard Creek out there. Who's going to maintain that, the beaut, you know, making it, making sure it stays beautiful? And I'm just going to give you my example, is that we have a, a bike path that goes around, the linear path that goes around Battle Creek, that I've tried to ride a bike on, and it's, it didn't disarray. So I just want to make sure that we have that, we're thinking through that, and we've got funds that can take care of it, maintain the green space.
Yeah, and that's obviously a very good point. And if the, if the LDDA was interested in, say, the re-greening of the south end of the mall, I mean, that's the kind of investment where it would be important that the LDDA had adequate capture on an annual basis to be able to maintain something like that. Because you're right, if you, if you undertake it, then you better make sure there's enough tax incremental financing available to maintain it.
Yeah, and then probably, I have one more comment. I think that, you know, there's all kinds of space, and I know that in Phase Two in the back here, or I guess it wasn't Phase Two, it was a, another potential, we were talking about daycare and maybe some sort of, I don't know, what was called a club or something, but maybe we should think about pickleball courts. Lots of times, people, you know, there's lots of communities that are putting those in. We've got the mall, we've got space in there. But then I guess my last piece to this was, are these going to be first-time home buyers, or most of these going to, well, or low-to-moder income families buying, buying, or tenants?
Yeah. I think, you know, if you look at the typologies that are included in the plan, and I would say I'm, I'm looking at, you know, the vision for the Target Plaza area, for example, you know, there's a townhomes, there's a mix of townhomes, looks like fourplexes, some cottage court-style housing, a wide variety of housing. So I think it probably would be a combination of both rentals and probably some mix of condos for ownership there. There's, there's not a lot, because of the density envisioned here, there's not a lot of, you know, single-family detached, for example, traditional homeownership. But I suspect it would be a combination, but given the density, the density that we're trying to achieve here, I suspect a lot of it would be rentals.
Okay. And so, but potentially, we could have some homeownership, and one of the things I think that we should really think about is, is educating. There are the first-time home buyers or people, low-to-moder income families out there. I know I worked at Neighborhoods, and that was a really big thing that we had discussed. If we had had funding to really fund first-time home buyers, it would be really imperative that we also educate them to kind of go back with what Annie said. People don't know how to own a home and maintain a home, and I was there, too. I just happened to have, you know, parents that would- And I think it's just, you know, we don't know. Every so often, you have to buy a new roof, you have to save for that. So I think there could potentially be a component in this for homeownership education. So, that's what I have to say.
Yeah.
I have a question on the Greenway, and losing the western end of Lakeview Square Mall, the former Sears building. Have you shown this plan to the mall ownership, and if so, what's their reaction?
Yeah, and I, I think that was one of the benefits of this process, too, is it gave us an opportunity to engage with the mall ownership. And as, as I know you know, Commissioner, there are actually multiple owners out at that site. You know, the former Big Box Stores are all independently owned. The dispensary that's out there is independently owned, and then GK owns a portion of the mall and a portion of the parking lot. And yes, we did engage GK pretty early on this. We actually originally had a much different vision for what the mall site might look like in this plan. But after having conversations with GK and how and what they might be invested in, we reimagined that. So do I think that this is a guarantee that GK will invest? I, I can't say I know that for certain. But I will say that this plan, and what we've incorporated in here, is much more in line with what they would see as a type of plan that they would potentially be interested in investing in. So I think it aligns very well with their vision for what the future of the mall could look like.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of comments. I'm glad we're looking forward to doing this. We have a big employer over there in Marshall. It's going to need some housing and a lot of space that's going to need to be taken up. So hopefully, we're, we are still ahead of that surge that's coming. I see it as a big wave coming down that area, definitely needing housing and other restaurants, doctors' offices. I'm excited about the zoning changes to fit these in, to make these businesses happen, not just looking at, you know, housing and doctor, or housing and food, but doctors' offices and other professional buildings that'll need to be developed down the stretch of road. And then the traffic down there is going to get such a big change. Been looking at other towns, and as I drive through, all of a sudden, you see housing coming up, and then you see the traffic changing because of the way the road was there, and I brought that up the last time we talked about this, how it will make a big significant impact of our, of having young people in the area be safe, traveling that area of that town. The question, one question that I have is, is back in the corner there where the parking lot is, and of course, we're looking at putting apartments and housing back there. What about the existing businesses that, that are back there? Are they repurchasing the property, or how's that going to happen to make that work over in the Target area, I guess we're, we're calling it?
Sure. Yeah, and, and there are actually a couple of different renderings that are included in the plan. One that envisions those businesses continuing to be back there, but as you indicated, also one that indicate, or that shows those businesses no longer back there. So I, I don't know exactly which one of those futures is the future for this particular area. But if, if, you know, if the, if the business is thriving and can be and needs to be accommodated, it can be. And if it doesn't make sense to have, you know, retail that far off the main corridor, and that makes more sense as housing is highest and best use, I think there's a, there's a plan for that as well.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Going back to the TIF comment, I was going to call on Commissioner White, being the Chair of the VC Tifa and the VCBRA, is there anything in addition you'd like to add and comment on that, or?
No, I think Ted covered the majority. I mean, maybe the only thing I might add is that, I mean, the purpose of having a TIF district and, you know, residents and business owners that are part of it around decision-making, is ensure that the public's tax, tax dollars are going to be put into productive use. That's been the big, been the chair the last few years of our Tifa in the Fort Industrial Park, and that's been, I would say, the, the pleasure of doing that role, is knowing that we're really making decisions with our businesses and residents in mind when we think about economic development and the future of Battle Creek. So, yeah.
Thank you. All right, hearing no more comments, we can vote. I think I'll call. All those in favor, oh wait, we need a motion. There's not been a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Support.
There's been a motion, and it's been supported, okay.
What was the motion? Can you state the motion?
Can you restate your comment with making a motion by stating a motion?
I did make a motion to approve. Request?
Read that.
Lakeview District, some plan for the master plan.
All right. There's been a motion to approve the Lakeview District Subplan of the Master Plan adoption. Is there support?
There's support.
It's been supported by Commissioner O'Donnell. Any additional comment before we get into the vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. This will now move forward to the City Commission for formal adoption. All right. Any additional comments by the public? Thank you for that. Any, any comments by staff or commissioners? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.